Please rise.
Lord, we want to thank you for giving us the privilege to hold these meetings in public and to listen to our citizens. We ask you to give us the courage, the knowledge, and the wisdom to make the right decisions for Spotsylvania. We ask you to keep all the citizens safe. We ask you to keep our policemen, firemen, EMS workers safe, and our military. In Jesus Christ's our name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Chairman, I'll read off a brief synopsis of the consent agenda to be voted on. Item three is approval award for a contract to C.W. Chittam Incorporated for Legion Payment and Park Improvement. This contract will provide construction services improvements for the American Legion Rehab and Parking Area, including the track access road parking area. There were 11 bids. The highest bid was 300,000; lowest bid was 146, and that's who we're awarding it to. Item four was approval of contract modification, number one, to James River Solutions for delivered unleaded gasoline diesel highway and diesel off-road fuels. This is the first renewal of a four-year contract. Item five is approval of the contract modification. Number four, Coral's Fleet Fueling for County Vehicles. This is a cooperative use contract. Will provide for gasoline and diesel fueling for county vehicles at the fueling stations. Item six is the approval of an emergency procurement modification to E.M.H. Environmental Incorporated. This is due to repair to the Mott's Run Water Treatment Filter under drains. The water produces the water at the treatment plant, and this filtration process is necessary. There's a blockage of a portion of the under drain that requires repair in the amount of Item seven is appropriation of FY 2016 adopted budget. This is the actual appropriation of the budget, including appropriated by categories for the schools. Item eight is authorization for public hearing on the Harrison Crossing Special Service District Expansion. This is where, when the board, basically, we authorize, we want to authorize a public hearing to be held on June 23rd. This concerning the recommended expansion of the Harrison Crossing to finish this section from Plank Road to Gordon Road. Item nine is commendation recognizing Junior Classical League chapters. Staff recommend the board commend those teachers and students in the Spotsylvania school system who through active participation in 12 chapters of the Junior Classical League support the value of study of classical culture in the county. Item 10 is the design improvements for the Route 606 Mud Tavern Road. Existing congestion, safety issues, or planned future development in this area, plus planned improvements of the I-95 interchange, so we've had to do some design improvements on that section. Item 11 is grant acceptance of the FY 2014 Assistance to the Firefighter Grant Award. This is in reference to the SCBA equipment, and this equipment, basically, this is a partial grant. We hope to go back and get additional funding to fully fund the mobile units that we need to recharge all the SCBA equipment. Item 12 is request to schedule a public hearing for consideration revision to county code relating to open air burning. This is our language would be in sync with the Virginia State Air Pollution Control Board regulations. And that is all on the consent agenda, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any items need to be removed? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion disced.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes.
Ms. Chairman, next item on agenda is VDOT report, and Sean is here to lead us in, give us an update on that.
Actually, sir, there's a public presentation.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Public presentation.
Amy, has anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. There are two citizens signed up to speak. The first is Andrew Flouche, followed by Nicole Flouche.
Thank you. Please come forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Andrew Flouche. I live over at 1806 Stony Creek Drive in the Breeze Wood Development. Last Wednesday, I learned about the plan that's under motion to have a baseball stadium about 4,500 feet from my house. So here I am today, the first meeting that I could come to, to address you, to express my concerns, my deepest concerns, that this is a bad decision for Spotsylvania County. We need to put the brakes on this project, stop it in its tracks, take some time to see what you're actually proposing, what you're thinking about doing to our community, to my community, where I live in Breeze Wood, where Mr. Chairman lives, in Breeze Wood. I took the opportunity yesterday to walk around and knock on 60 of my neighbors' doors in Breeze Wood. What I found is that about, not everyone was home, of course, but I talked to about 30 people who were home. The good majority of those people had no idea what you're trying to do. They had no clue that there was going to be any kind of stadium in Spotsylvania County. Most people said, "Oh, the stadium, oh, in Central Park. Oh, yeah, that's cool." That was exactly my view a few weeks ago. I don't subscribe to the paper. I'm a lawyer. I have an office over at Lee's Hill Shopping Center. I employ three people in Spotsylvania County. I'm very informed, but I don't subscribe to the paper. I wasn't and didn't know that this was going on at all. Neither do my neighbors. Neither do our neighbors, Mr. Chairman. This is wrong for our county. It's wrong to be pushing through so fast that nobody has a clue what's happening. It's just mind-boggling that you guys would think that we can spend this kind of taxpayer money to do this kind of project so fast that nobody has a clue it's even been done. By the time the ink is, it's still wet on the paper, nobody will even have a clue what's happening in their community. That's my main objection. I have objections to the placement, of course, with noise and traffic, and I know that everybody thinks, the proponents think, there's not going to be a traffic problem. I disagree. We need a traffic study. Let's show some numbers. Let's show traffic studies, actually, of that site to show if it's going to be a problem or not. Let's have a noise study. There was a noise study done for the racetrack. Why isn't there a noise study done for the baseball stadium? And I noted in reviewing the county code today, the racetrack has an exception in our noise ordinance now. I didn't know about that. I'm guessing the baseball stadium is going to get an exception as well, so it's going to disturb my whole neighborhood. That's just great. Makes me proud to be a citizen of Spotsylvania County. The problem is, if this goes forward, we're going to be putting our house up for sale. We don't want to live next to a baseball stadium like this, especially one that's poorly thought out, poorly designed, and that we're going to be stuck paying for. It's just unacceptable. I really encourage you guys to talk to the people you represent. We send you here to represent us, not to represent what you think we want, what you think may be in our best interests. You're here to represent us, me, my neighbors, our families, our friends, and that's what you need to be doing. And I don't think this baseball stadium is in our best interest, especially the way it's been proposed to push it forward. I'm not against baseball. I'm not against the stadium. I'm against this plan. It needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Nicole Flouche.
Thank you for letting me come speak to you today. I apologize in advance, I'm not as well-spoken as my husband. I live at 1806 Stony Creek. I also am against this stadium, like Andrew said. He was able to go out and speak to. Thirty of our neighbors are friends. We have friends that also moved into Breeze Wood, that have infants, that have small children that need to sleep at night. I need to sleep at night. We have, our realtor was fabulous. She found us this wonderful home four years ago, and she, we probably drove her nuts with all of our special requests. I have a condition where I need MRIs every so often, so I need to be in close to these two wonderful hospitals that we have. I actually was in favor of the hospital, thank you. But I don't like to live next to the hospital. I like being near 95 and the shops that we have. We have wonderful stores, and I'm so thankful that we have these wonderful restaurants and stores that I can eat at, and I love being in Spotsylvania. I love my quiet neighborhood, but I will have to move if the stadium goes in because the loud noise, the constant interruptions with traffic. Mr. Skinner, you know, I'm a sacristan at St. Jude, and on a good day, when I am abrahing the traffic laws, because I'm married to a traffic attorney, it takes me less than five minutes to get from our house in Stony Creek around the corner to St. Jude. When we moved to our permanent home, thank goodness, I have no idea how long it's going to take, because I have to go all the way down South Point Parkway. In the last three years, there've been 144 wrecks on South Point Parkway, and it causes huge backups. When there's a wreck, it can take up to 10 minutes to go that short distance to St. Jude. When we have to get all the way down South Point Parkway, all the way down Route 1, turning left onto Route 17, past the target, past the hospital, all the way up to Lee's Hill School Drive to the new site, it's going to take like three minutes to get to church, and Father's not going to wait to start Mass for me. I don't care that he's, I'm a sacristan, it's just not going to happen. So it's, we are worried about the traffic. We are worried about the noise, the lights. We have friends that are closer than us to the proposed site, and they just had a little baby a few months ago, and we told them about the stadium, and my friend just panicked. She's like, "What are we going to do? Our child can't sleep with the constant noise and stuff." And I just said, "Well, write to your supervisor. Come speak." And I hope that they do. We hope that all of our neighbors do, regardless of their opinion, because we want them heard. We want all of them to come tell you how they feel, because it is important. Thank you.
Monty Williford.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I thought it would take just a quick moment to bring you up to a couple of items. One, we received a announcement this week from PETA out of Norfolk, Virginia, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. And you may have seen the story in the Freelance Star a week or so ago, but there was a dog that strayed from his owner and actually went over the edge at one of the county dams. He was pretty much wedged, and our special technical rescue team was called, and using high-angle rescue equipment, we put people over the dam and rescued the dog, which brought about significant media attention and an award. So PETA will be coming within the next few weeks to month to the county to award the Spotsylvania County Fire Rescue and Emergency Management System for that. And then in addition, I would bring up in the same item, we had a structure fire down in the Partlow area three weeks ago, and was able to rescue a lady's cat from the structure fire. We were lucky to be able to get all the occupants out quickly, but took a little while to find that cat. So we've been having a good luck with pets and animals, and I know many, many people, their pet is as much of the family, you know, as the actual bloodline, so I wanted to bring that up. We've had a number of critical calls over the last few weeks, and don't do it all the time because of the close proximity to the hospitals, but delivered a baby in the ambulance yesterday. So we've been busy, and I always like to commend the responders in the fire and rescue system, and I do it whenever I get a chance. Also, just to bring to your attention, at the next board meeting, I'll be doing a resolution to commend the members of the system, but specifically to commend the volunteer members of the system. We'll be bringing in, as representatives of the entire system, those members who have donated more than 2,000 hours for the year. So we don't want to just recognize them, because we've had a tremendous, we have hundreds of county residents that provide volunteer service for us, and whether they do several hundred hours or 1,000 hours, it's all important, but we will bring in those that are 2,000 hours, and we've drafted a resolution from the board to recognize the volunteer agencies in Spotsylvania Fire Rescue and Emergency Management System for their service to the citizens of the county. And we'll have them in at the next meeting in May. Any questions for me? Thank you.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Anybody who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Agging on to Mr. Williford, EMS week is upcoming, May 17th that week, and I just wanted to bring to the attention of the citizens that EMS provides a service that we hope we never have to call, but when we do call, we want them to get there promptly and be properly trained, and that the end result is favorable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing nobody rise, we'll move on with the agenda, and next up is VDOT.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'd like to bring you your May update. First, I'll go through some of the construction projects. The Gordon Road Park and Ride Expansion, the expansion lot is actually estimated to be completed in August of this year, so we'll be shifting, we'll have that new expansion lot fully completed by August 6th of 2015. The Route 620 Harrison Road Levels Project, that was, project is complete, so we won't have that on the report next month. The Loryella Park Drive Culvert Replacement, the contractor, the roadway is open, the contractor's working on some punchless items. He did miss his completion date, so we are charging the contractor liquidated damages at this point. Plantation for his drive culvert, also, the contractor has not completed it yet, and he is being charged liquidated damages. I'll give you an update on the Exit 126 IMR and the planning study. The environmental work session with the county and VDOT staff is scheduled for May 19th. Kimley Horn will be presenting this week to the Transportation Committee. The presentation will detail the preferred alternative for the IMR and the progress made thus far on the planning study. The focus of the presentation will kind of be on the future needs that we've gotten from the IMR, plus what we're looking at in the planning study right now. The draft IMR will be complete on May 14th, and the planning study is slated to be complete in June. And I think there's been some questions regards to the IMR and the planning study. The IMR specifically focuses on the J-Ramp, and making sure that the J-Ramp is being studied so that it can be approved by FHWA and moved forward. The planning study incorporates all the other facets that we have looked at for the Jackson Gateway, as far as the super ramp, as far as the widening of 17, and the flyover. So I mean, those portions are being looked at in a planning study. We use portions of the planning study to go in, try to complete the IMR, but the full-blown planning study, which will detail specifically which projects need to happen to support the J-Ramp and the future traffic in the area, will be concluded in the planning study. So that will be done in June. And that planning study and the IMR all included future development in the area that has not been approved yet, so Jackson Village is in there, Alexander's Crossings, Hickory Ridge, I believe, is also in there also. Now to move forward to some of the supervisor updates. Mrs. Sebula, you had requested us to review logging concerns on Saddle Brook subdivision. Our inspectors went out there and looked at that issue. The permit holder will be installing the appropriate signage and ensuring the roadway is clean of debris. After the logger is out of the area, we'll go out and assess the areas for patching. Mr. McLaughlin, you had requested us to address low shoulders on Old Plank. Our maintenance crews have gone out there and addressed some of those locations, specifically the location near Smoke Tree, and then there was another location just west of Chancellor Road. There was also a request to review Mass upon Church Road for share the road signs. We have assessed the roadway and will be installing signage between Church Pond Road and Route 17, as this is an identified U.S. buck route. Mr. Ross, you had requested us to address a drainage concern on Green Gate Road. Our maintenance crews were scheduled to clean out that drainage ditch this morning. I understand that they talked to the citizen, and he was amenable to the resolution that we came to. Mr. Skinner, there was a request to review signal timings for the dual lefts on route at South Point Parkway. We found out that it was a loop detection that was messed up in that area. The contractor is scheduled to repair that detection by the close of the week, barring any conflicts. There was also a request for the drainage concern at Lee's Hill School Drive. We've reached out to the HOA. I'm working with Melissa Wine on that topic, and we're supposed to have our drainage portion complete by the end of the month.
What is the HOA's responsibility?
Anything outside of the right-of-way.
Which is what? That was a big right-of-way, I believe.
There's 45 feet from the center line.
Okay, so that includes that pipe that goes from the drain out there, that?
No.
Who's responsible for that?
That is outside of the drainage. That is outside of the right-of-way.
That's what I'm saying, but, okay. That pipe, is the drain itself where it comes down, where you see the culvert, the cement culvert there, and it goes into a drain? Is that drain inside your, that's outside?
The pipe, from the pipe on out is outside of the right-of-way. The drain itself is us.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
I got you. Okay, so we're working together to see when we fix it.
That everything will be tied together.
Everything will be done, okay. And the other thing was, when, on the 15th, they're going to do that detection?
Their schedule, the schedule I got this week was they were supposed to do it between the 11th and the 15th.
Okay. Is, okay, we know that there was bad, and it's even before that work was done, that left turn lane was pretty slow to get everybody through. If, once this is done, and it still takes two or three lights to get a left turn into McDonald's, we need to look at that, please, if you don't mind. I mean, we'll see what it is after the detection, because you said they also delayed another two seconds?
Yep.
Who knows what that'll do, so maybe.
With the detection in that it may have solved the issue. We'll see.
We'll see. It's just, I'd like to stand by to see what that comes up with.
Okay.
Okay? And thank you very much. Appreciate it, Sean.
Ms. Haddock, you had a request for us to evaluate trees along Monrovia Road. Our staff has looked at that, and we will be scheduling tree removal at multiple locations. There was also a request for signage at Wingford Corner. I'll be working with Doug and our traffic engineering. You provided me some documentation to help me move that along. And that concludes my report. Does anybody have anything?
Questions? Mr. Sebula?
Yeah. Wanted to thank you, number one, for all of the pothole repairs. I have to make a little comment on them, though. As I get down the road, I see them, and I think that it's an animal or something laying in the road, and I want to swerve around. But you've done such a great job on filling the holes on my rural roads. The second thing is a public safety issue, at least from my perspective. I don't know if there's an answer. That's why I'm bringing it up to you. The double-yellow-line syndrome that we have on all of our rural roads. I know that anyone who has driven on our rural roads has experienced the same thing that I have, and that's that people parallel the double-yellow-lines instead of staying on one side or the other of them. Has there been any, at any time, a study, or a thought, or maybe even some signage that says, "Please, stay on your side of the double"? I know that's a lot of wordage, but I think you know where I'm coming from. Is there, is there some solution that we can put out there to make the public aware that you cannot straddle double-yellow-lines, especially on curves, and especially when you're texting and speaking on the phone?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, it's interesting you bring it up, because we generally find the opposite. When we put the yellow lines, people generally veer to the shoulder. So it's very odd that this has come up. I can check with traffic engineer, but I'm not sure of any regulated sign that we put up that indicates for people they need to pay attention to the double-yellow-line.
I had never seen one, but I thought I would raise the issue and see if we can find a solution.
I will check into that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Trampi.
Thank you. Across from the Gordon Road commuter lot, there, 7-Eleven has an extended drive so that people can turn left onto Gordon Road out of there. There's construction equipment there. I was just wondering, is that part of the expansion, or is that not?
We just recently paved Gordon Road through there, so that was a paving operation.
Okay, that's with the construction equipment there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions. I know that we're in the process of putting out for bid a Route 1 to Away Corridor Study, but that's going to take some time, so I was wondering if you guys can take a look at Courthouse Road heading to Route 1, and then that left turn lane heading north, because it not only backs up past, you know, it fills up and then it goes past, and I'm noticing it all during the day, not just at peak times. So if we can take a look and see what can be done to get people through there. Then there's also another backup, South Point Parkway to Route 1 South. Is that the one that Mr. Skinner was talking about, where you make a right to go Route 1 South from South Point Parkway?
Right. Well, it's in the same district.
No, he's talking on Route 1. It's in the same intersection.
Well, that right there, at times, can back up to Walmart, and so we need to see, and perhaps, I'm not looking for a quick fix, but is there something that we can do? Do we have enough right-of-way to perhaps put another turn lane out onto Route 1? I know that there's the water that's there, so that's going to be costly, so.
Yeah, I think some of what you're talking about now, as far as the capacity issues, is addressed in the IMR and in the planning study. So I think some of the solutions for some of this may come out of there, but I will look to see if there's any kind of quick fix that we can put on it, like adjusting the signal timings.
Right.
To try to get people out of there sooner than later.
Okay, that would be good. And part of that, too, and as we heard from folks this afternoon, we had already asked our traffic engineer to take a look at traffic from a stadium. Can we tack that on to what you guys have done? Because there already is a high-density commercial that is there. There is a certain number of parking spaces for a stadium, so the amount of traffic that would be coming from that is set. So we're not looking at guessing of what it could be and how much it could hold. We kind of know what it is. I'd like to see if we can tack that on with all of these planning studies and everything else that is being done, and throw in a couple of numbers and.
I think that it could potentially be done, but it would delay.
It would delay?
Yes.
It would delay everything?
It would delay delivering the product that we said we were going to deliver on the 14th in June.
Then let me ask it this way. We already have a certain zone that is there that is projected to produce X number of cars, and according to our traffic engineer, it's more than a stadium. So can we get that information to you, you guys? And you guys can verify, deny, do whatever it is, because when you have a set number of spaces at a store, let's just say, if it's a Sam's Club, and we know there's going to be 1,000 cars there, we know that there's only going to be, at one time, 1,000 trips in and out. With a stadium, we know that there are set times that events are going to be happening, and if there's less traffic potentially coming from the same area than it is currently zoned, how, is that going to really delay it that long?
Well, my deadline is Thursday, so.
I know, well.
We can take a look at it. I mean.
That's all I ask.
If we've got information, we can take a look at it.
That's all I ask, is just to see what we can do, and if it turns out to be something that needs to be studied in depth and at length, we can also do that, but if we can piggyback, that'd be fantastic. If we can't, we have already asked for at least 60 days more, so we have time.
Okay.
Okay. And that's everything from me. Anything else from the board? Mr. McLaughlin?
Just one quick one. You mentioned the studies. When in June is it due?
The planning study draft will be due in June. As of right now, we're hoping mid-June, but it could be toward the tail end of June.
Till like 15 June?
Hopefully.
Give or take.
Yes.
So my only question was, what, you mentioned you've taken into consideration future development and potential growth, and I know there's some projected roads and bridges, and have you taken into consideration all of that in the study?
No. The only thing that was, that was, that we studied were the things that we presented to this board during our work session, and the Germana Extension. Those were the only roads.
Let me ask, maybe that's the question, the Germana Extension?
Germana Extension is in there, but it is not predicated to actually having to happen. We've shown it to show what the benefits could be if that road were there, the benefits to Route 1.
So it does connect to 1, then?
Yeah. Well, it connects back to 17, so it's 1 to 17.
And then again, over to past Germana and up past?
We don't show that portion in our planning study.
I guess that's the question, because ultimately, the plan would, you're really, from 1 all the way back down to 1, essentially, what you would end up doing, correct?
That would happen with future development, but we don't have that.
Which piece did you project?
Projected the portion from, I guess it's the Market Street side, from there, back to 17.
Okay, so from, the piece that goes from 17 past the hospital to through Jackson Village and all that is not projected?
No.
I mean, I think that's an important piece of the overall development. How does that affect, I guess, the question?
I think that piece is almost being looked at by their study, is what I believe.
Their study and your study coincide?
Have not coordinated the two studies.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sebula?
A further question on that. Are you looking at an extension of Spotsylvania Avenue?
Extension of Spotsylvania Avenue?
Down past, you know, Hooters, down?
Yes, that's the road we were just talking, that's the Germana Park Extension.
Germana, okay, okay. I didn't know that title. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Be back at 6:30.
Ms. Chairman, the only presentation we have tonight for Spotsylvania County Tourism Awards is an information item, and I invite Debbie Ailer to come up to talk to you about how we obtained this award, and then after her presentation and the board has sat down And then, after her presentation, if the board will sit down, well, we would like to do a photo op.
Debbie Ailer, Tourism Manager for the Spotsylvania County. Virginia Association of Conventions and Visitor Bureaus is a not-for-profit membership organization that's made up of destination marketing organizations, visitor bureaus, and the companies that support them. It was started in about 1978 to promote professionalism within the Virginia tourism industry. Works on behalf of its members to make sure that tourism and travel continue to be strong economic drivers in the Commonwealth. Virgo Awards competition honors the best and brightest in Virginia tourism industry. Shows the immense talent and dedication of the VACVB's members. Judging panel consisted of four out-of-state peers, and awards were determined based on the quality of the submission, economic efficiency, and the economic or community impact. Quoted in the VACVB press release, Spotsylvania County's Economic Development and Tourism Department was a dual winner this year for their entries in the Destination Event of the Year in tourism categories. Their entries were for the 150th Wilderness and Spotsylvania Courthouse Living History Weekend. Brian Gorg quoted, he said, "The judges commented on the high quality of the event, which was able to reach a wide demographic." And the judges also said that the variety of advertising outlets complemented the event's theme and overall effectiveness of the campaign. I'd like to congratulate the Spotsylvania County elected officials, all of our staff, and volunteers who worked long days to make it as successful as it is.
Mr. Skinner has a comment?
Thank you. In that presentation, Debbie, you said elected officials. And I think we had the easiest job of this whole thing by being just supportive of you guys. But the real work came from you and the staff and everybody else that put their effort in there. And I want the county to know that it happens because of the staff, not because of us who sit up here. Very easy to support you, and it's very easy to support quality people. So, I thank you for that very much, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is County Minister and County Attorney's Report. The only subject that I have is I was asked to bring back, the board at the last meeting voted to send a letter out to the baseball folks concerning the extension, and which I have done, and I think the board's been copied on that. What our staff is looking for now is moving forward, have some discussion, direction on the process as we prepare. We, to date, we have not heard anything back. But once we hear something, we want to be prepared to be able to move forward in whatever the board desires.
Thank you. I think part of this motion that was made was added on by Ms. Heidig to establish a committee of board members, EDA members, and also folks from the community to spearhead the discussion, but not to be the only ones having the discussion. I would like to make sure that all board members are included in everything that is done, copied on every email as much as humanly possible. And then, all the input that is had from everybody is taken into account. But in saying that, I'd also like to see, as it says in here, deadlines. Because, as we know, committees can be notorious for dragging their feet, whether intentionally or unintentionally, and not getting things accomplished. So, I would also like to see deadlines set. And this is all, obviously, moving along, not knowing what baseball's going to do, but hoping that they will grant an extension of minimum of 60 days beyond their timetable they had given to us originally. So, when it comes to hiring outside counsel, though, I would not be in favor of spending any money until the point that we have that extension. That makes no sense. I know that our county attorney has already identified a person who has experience in dealing with these matters. And we can also get details from him, too. Any questions, concerns? Mr. Ross?
So, just so I understand this correctly, tonight, we're going to discuss the things you talked about. But I agree, do we need a resolution to say we're not going to spend any money on outside counsel until Major League Baseball comes back, or is it good that Mr. Yakubowski said that?
Right, a consensus would work. I guess my question would be if, what would be the board's desire? Should we hear back between today and the next board meeting with respect to the extension? Does the board want me to wait until the next board meeting to each counsel? Or, once that's done, consult with the county admin and go from there?
My preference would be, I mean, I think you can engage them all you want, but that we don't actually start billing, that that outside attorney does not bill the county until we meet again to discuss it, if that's the consensus of the board.
I think, to simplify, I think it may work much easier, we need to hear back first. So, I think that needs to take place. And once we hear back, my understanding is part of the motion, Mr. Chairman, was that you would have a group that would kind of sit down and have some dialogue and talk. And after that, then there may be some engagement in the future with attorneys. But by that time, I think we should know something by the May 26 meeting or thereafter, and then we can deal with it then.
Mr. McGoughlin?
I've got a question, too, and really goes back. Should not the EDA be hiring the attorney?
That's a very good question. They could, but in the end, it's...
It is, but...
The same pot of money. But I will say that I've spoken with the EDA council, and so, with the appropriate waiver from outside counsel, we have no concerns with sharing the same outside counsel for both the EDA and the county, because their interest would be...
Now, when you say "sharing"?
Using the same outside counsel.
Why do we both need a counsel, I guess, is the question? We'd like double... I mean, I understand, they were going to get a, I thought, my understanding was they're going to hire a qualified attorney to negotiate the lease or lease-pursue baseball.
But on behalf of the county, I will regularly engage with that counsel just to make sure that you all are informed and I'm informed as it progresses. But it's not double billing. I don't think it would add any more to the expense.
So, it sounds like the county would be represented by this attorney, because you're going to be talking to him. Because we had a big thing with the EDA, saying, you know, this is an EDA thing, you know, it's separate from the county. I think that was put into us last Tuesday, a week ago, that clearly defined that this is an EDA thing, which was, you know, news to me, how that process worked. Wouldn't we just get the same attorney, and you'd have to get a non-conflict of interest from him, that he can represent both? Because obviously, I don't want you talking to him if he's not representing us as well, correct?
Well, he would, I guess technically, be representing the EDA, but also, I would engage outside counsel to protect the county's interests. If at any point, there was, if at any point, there was a divergence between the EDA and the board...
I would just recommend that we set that up front, that this attorney would represent both the Board of Supervisors and the EDA, so that he or she does not have any conflict of interest. I think that makes a lot of sense.
That was, that was the plan.
Chairman? Yes. Are you finished?
Along those same lines, I did have an opportunity to talk, because one of the things that we talked about was actually all the members here and all the EDA members sitting down with the owner and questioning things, and stuff about the contracts and everything else of that nature, plus some additional citizens involved in this. Now, what we have found out is that if it's possible, on the 26th, instead of us starting, we can start our meeting at 6 o'clock, but we could possibly meet with the owner of the baseball team earlier at 5 o'clock or something of that nature. And we would have a meeting to sit around and talk to him and pose the questions, why this, why that, why can't you do this, and why are you doing that? Because I think that's what everybody was a little concerned about, that here was a contract, and we didn't have much to say in it, it was pushed in our way. So, I do know that Mr. Quinn is available on the 26th, and if we want to meet early. And that gives us also times, I think each of us should provide a citizen, if you want to, that's interested in learning and, you know, being part of this decision, or at least understanding the process. So, I just want to throw that out, but I do know that Mr. Quinn is available on the 26th to be in here and to talk to everybody that's on this committee.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Heidig?
It was my intent that it wouldn't, like, be all of us, because if it's all of us, and we each appoint somebody, and then the EDA, that's like 21 people, plus the legal counsel, which I think would be too much. I would be perfectly content with a couple of supervisors and a couple of EDA people, and then some private citizens, as well as the outside counsel. That was my intent, you know, to meet with them. And then, each of us can go to the people that are the board members or whatever with our concerns and our list of concerns, and they can negotiate, rather than trying to negotiate with a relatively large committee.
Ms. Chair?
I would say this, I would leave it up to each board member if they want to be part of this committee, because I definitely heard at the last meeting that, you know, there were just two of us and didn't get... So, my point is this, if you'd like to be part of the committee, you're welcome to be part of the committee that way. Nobody can say, "We didn't, you didn't know, or we didn't have an opportunity to question." So, and I appreciate what you want to do and...
Well, excuse me. My primary concern is if there's three of us, then we have to announce it as a meeting, and we have to have all the proper notification and stuff like that.
But that's why I'm saying it, on the day of our regular meeting, we can make an announcement that there will be a prior meeting starting at 5 o'clock. It wouldn't take a special advertisement or anything of that nature. So, that's how I'm saying that.
It wouldn't need to be advertised, if it's a special meeting, just by posting three days, three business days ahead of time, just to be clear. Not in the paper, but, right.
Mr. Ross?
I just throwing out, it has been a week since this board voted to extend the deadline. We haven't heard back. Are we putting the cart before the horse? Wouldn't it be best for everyone involved here to know the decision of Minor League Baseball and the extension? Because if they say no, then it's OBE, right? It doesn't matter. We don't have to discuss, we don't have a special meeting, we don't have anything, it's done.
Well, it's very easy to cancel a 5 o'clock meeting than that, once we leave here tonight to get everybody together. So, I would say, I'm just trying to be safe here. If Major League Baseball comes back and says, "No, there's no extension," we're done. We're absolutely done. But if they come back and say it, I'm just saying, we could pre-plan it, we can always cancel it.
Mr. Sebula?
Yeah, I totally agree, Gary. The whole idea here is planning. If it goes away, it goes away. If it's going to happen, then we need to plan for it. And I would suggest that we plan for it at a 3 o'clock meeting, which would give us a couple of hours, if needed, to go over anything. And it's a regularly announced meeting. We don't have to do anything special, and we can deal with it at that point in time.
That would...
26th.
That's a 6 o'clock meeting.
But we could have a 3 o'clock meeting.
Oh, you were just saying it's start time now, 3 to...
Start time at 3, give us...
It would be a special meeting.
Yes, start time at 3, and give us some time, and then we go into our regular meeting at 6.
Well, Mr. Chair, my only concern is I would also like the EDA people that want to be there to be there, and many of them, like several of our board members, have real jobs. And so, I would be concerned that starting at 3 might be difficult. And also, you know, any citizens that might be appointed. I don't have an objection to that, as long as it does not preclude people from attending because of the time.
We could also do it at the end, if that would make, because everybody does need to be here, and I agree with that, Ann. We could change it to after our meeting.
Let me throw this out there. One of my thoughts of when Ms. Heidig had brought this up was that we, as a county, and EDA, and everybody else that is on this side of the table, need to have our issues sorted through. And so, I think by doing it in two weeks from now, I think it's too early, especially because we don't even know if we're going to have the extension. I would propose that we do it at our June meeting, and invite the owner at that point. We will already have this committee set up, having gone through some of the issues. Put the issues that the public had raised on a checklist, and let's go through them one by one, get answers, find out the answers to those questions from them. And it will give us the time that we need to then be prepared for when they come in, because, let's face it, they've done this before and we haven't. And we need to make sure that our stuff is gone through, and we know what we're doing and what we're talking about, and also that we do have an extension, because it would be, quite honestly, a waste of time to have this in, and then for it to be canceled. And I think this would give this time, or the time that we would have would give this committee and board members the time necessary, because the last thing we want to do is rush anymore. Is that fine to... Anybody have an objection with our June meeting? If everything is granted, to go ahead with a, basically, a work session with the other side?
Mr. Chair, that was my question. It's going to be here in...
Yes, sir. It'll be right here televised, public can be here, absolutely. EDA, everybody. But before that point, to have the working committee set up of EDA members, board members, that will take the time to go through each of these issues, put it together in a package, let everybody have enough time to weigh in on what's going on, get answers, get that out and distributed to everybody. And then, that way, when we go into the meeting in June, we will not be, hopefully, will not be surprised, because we will have done enough of our work necessary to be prepared for that meeting.
Mr. Chair? That sounds like a great idea. But I guess part of where I'm coming from, too, is,
would it be helpful for baseball to understand the majority's stance on different things before we... Would that be the purpose of these committee meetings before? For instance, I myself think it's outside of the scope of government to bond for baseball. That's just, you know, my position, and I feel I'm representing my constituents in that way. I don't know if that's the majority of the board's philosophy or not. But I think it'd be helpful if some of these things did come out, because baseball might look at that and say, "Well, the majority of this board is not for bonding. They're for free markets." I did know, I asked Doug to see if there was any interest in our large developers getting together with us even tonight to talk about, maybe they could share the risk. I don't know if there's been any feedback on that or not from them, or if...
No.
So, I don't know if that would be beneficial to everybody, or is that part of the committee process, as we talk through this, or...
I would have no problem with everybody's opinion being obviously laid out there and put out there. And if we can get the answers to those questions ahead of time, that would be helpful, absolutely. Because I'm assuming that each of us has many, many questions beyond, you know, the starting point, just of how it works, how it functions, a lot of why, how can we do this? I know one of the things that was brought up was it seemed like a lot of the reward was going to the Leesee, and the county was being cut out of that part. So, those are the type of things I envision this committee figuring out, finding out. Even if we don't get an answer, it is at least on the sheet of questions that we have, so that we, when we meet with the baseball folks in June, we will be better prepared and better equipped to have this discussion with them.
I agree, because, for instance, a public parking facility may be something that the county should provide, and yet, the revenue would have to come to the county for that, not, I mean... not, I mean, that's, again, my opinion, but those would be things to work out. With those committee meetings, do you have a set frequency?
You know, to be very honest with you, and I don't mean to be pushing this, anybody weigh in as you see fit, I know that everybody has commitments with work, other committees, vacations, schools, everything is coming up. So, the last thing I want to do is add another Thursday night meeting to everybody's schedule. So, I would hope that we can do a lot of this via email, maybe conference call if we need to, maybe one or two meetings, but I don't envision this to be in every single morning, you know, for four hours. I would like this to be as robust as possible and as much input as possible, and hey, I just thought of this, get this out to the committee, can we find out the answer to this? Because this is, this needs to be an inclusive process of everybody's opinion and everybody's concern as we move along.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I kind of have to go back to the attorney thing, I just, I won't be here in June, so it doesn't matter. But what I do see that could be valuable to the board is, once the committee kind of meets and there's a generic consensus of, these are the areas of what we'd like to see, I would think it would be good to at least have, on an hourly basis, some conversation, maybe a conference call with an attorney that's an expertise in this, to find out if these are some things that are doable. I mean, before we go in June to the meeting, and like I said, I won't be here, but I know you mentioned not to hire outside counsel, but what I was thinking, Mr. Ross, is some idea where, you know, bounce it off somebody that has some legal expertise in this type of baseball arrangements. I mean, is this even a doable thing, what we're thinking about, in the sense of it, and gets a little feedback, and just, and pay, you know, an hour conference call? It might be worth investment, not really hire them to do the whole thing, but just have somebody just to weigh in. But that was just a suggestion on my part, because I don't think we have any legal counsel with that expertise, and it may be prudent to have it at some point.
And I think that that would probably be helpful, once we hear from baseball, because if May 31st comes and...
But I wanted to make sure, because what I was hearing is, we're not going to spend any money on legal counsel prior to that, and that's why I think, I'm not speaking for Jim, but I just will make sure staff understand that you might want to have an hour conference call and say, "Hey, look, you know, this is what some elements we're working out," and at least get some feedback. I'm not talking about spending thousands of dollars, but some type of arrangement, so that's up to the board.
Well, I would say we have 19 days to come up with that generic form of whatever it takes. So, I would say, in between that time, we can put that together, and then hopefully by that time, baseball would come back with a yea or a nay, and then at that point, we would realize whether or not, before we meet with anybody in June, we flush that through, and you're right, find out, you know, is this not going to fly? Is this something that will never happen? So, don't even try, and if that's true, then it might not even be worth the board moving forward with any action at that point. So, but that is a good idea, but I would say, wait until we get the yes or no, and then we spend money regardless of where the committee is at that point.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. What goes, Mr. Skinner there?
You say 19 days, and I agree with that. We do have 19 days till the end, but we also have that 26th meeting. On the 26th, we have another meeting. And what you said is, a lot of emails going back and forth, and then we could also accumulate everything we've got and finalize it on the 26th. At that time, we should know whether or not we go forward, and then at that time, we discuss whether or not the attorney and what we want to spend and stuff of that nature. But I agree, we, you know, if we get to two months, two months go by pretty fast.
Right.
So, just pre-planning ahead is a good idea, and I'd recommend that we have a work session on the 26th, just devoted a little bit to all the concerns that we've got, we've got a chance for everybody to air them, so we know what we're going with, and then if we got approval from Major League Baseball, we can tell them, what are these issues we need to take to the attorney?
That's, that makes a lot of sense. Mr. Ross.
Mr. Chair, I do think it's a great idea, but I have to ask Jim, because I think, well, I remember when I first became a supervisor, we got talked about not having threads of email with conversations and whatnot in them, for violating the same FOIA of needing to announce a meeting. So, is this legally okay for us to do?
I can prepare, you're talking about emails back and forth?
Emails back and forth, group threads, talking about this, you know, what you want, what we want, who wants...
I can prepare a memo, if that's okay.
Is that okay? I mean, I could, my understanding is you can't do that.
Well, it depends, it depends, and if we're to have that discussion, I would...
I would suggest that anything that we do via email would be the committee made up of two supervisors and two EDA, so that when board members forward a question, let's say, to the committee, then wouldn't it be going out to the entire board at that point? But then at the 26th, we would have an update of everything that has gone on.
And that's a, it's a good point and a legitimate concern, and we can, we can address that, and it's just legal advice, and I, with all due respect, feel more comfortable doing it either in closed session or via memo, just in legal advice. And there are different rules, exceptions. And so, I'm clear, just, so I'm not, and I will advise EDA counsel the same, that we're not going to engage outside counsel until, just to be clear, we come back to the board, so we have a board meeting, and the board gives me direction to do that, is that...
Is there any objection to that?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a little clarity on my part, too. So, what we would hope to do is somehow hear something from baseball between now and the next meeting, and then some dialogue, however it takes place, will have taken place. One of the suggestions that we might want to consider is, as you formulate all the points of this and that, is all of it could come to, you know, include admin, or we could distribute it for you guys or Harvard's, we could be the facilitator for that, if you need that. And then we come back on the 26th, and everybody could have whatever's being discussed, everybody could have it, so that in the end, you have something that's, everybody, the consensus agrees on.
Just maybe a slightly separate question. In the letter, and I didn't pull it up here lately, did we give them a respond-by date? Hey, you need to respond to the county by 31 May?
No, no.
Because at what point, should we make a motion that says, "Hey, look, if we don't hear by 31, if you don't respond by the 31st of May, we'll go to the, it's over." You know, we're in the wrong bargaining position right now, we're, you know, kind of waiting for the offer, waiting for them to call us back for a date.
The way I took the letter was, you had a deadline of May 31st, we're asked for extension. If you wouldn't respond to me by May 31st, I'm assuming you're not interested in giving an extension.
But if they respond on 15 June, are we still doing this, or, that's my question, should we go back and give them a deadline? Say, "Hey, you know, based on we, you know, the world keeps moving, give us till 31 May, provide a response to this committee," or...
I would say that if, if we had any business that would be so egregiously incompetent to let their deadline expire when we have asked for an extension, I would not want to do business with those people. So, if they come back in June 20th and say, "Oh, yeah, you have, you have 60 days," well, tough, you know, you lost.
I think that's what I'm kind of saying, is if one June shows up and they haven't responded, are we done?
Well, that's the assumption, is that they didn't want to extend it. We asked them to extend their May 31st deadline, and if they come back and...
Well, no, I agree.
It lapses, then.
But I just don't want us to go through this again on June 12th or something.
Oh, no, June 12th, I mean, we would hopefully know before then, and if it has...
Okay, and that's all I'm saying, if they don't respond, then it's over.
Correct.
All right, yes.
Any other questions, comments? And I think what we need to do is figure out this committee. Now, do we want to appoint board members tonight and EDA members tonight, or ask the EDA to put forward, too, and if we have any citizens who have been interested in being involved? Mr. Skinner.
Mr. Chairman, I will say this, at the last EDA member, meeting that I attended, we went into closed session, talked about this for legal aspects of it, but I know that they're very interested in all the EDA members being part of this committee. You can talk to them individually, but I think all the members should be available, if they want to be part of the subcommittee or the committee, they should be. I mean, they're just as important as we are, they're, you know, they have the same type of questions we have, and as, again, I'm saying, originally, we thought it was a good idea that this Board of Supervisors and the EDA make up this committee with a few of the citizens that have shown interest in it. If we don't want citizens, that's fine, but I think we should offer it to every EDA member out there and each board member. But again, that's just what I got from the EDA when I attended.
Well, I personally would like to filter it down to just a couple, simply because, as Ann has said, you have too many people on a committee, and it takes all day just to get everybody to get their five minutes.
I'll just pass that on to you.
Right. Yeah, but we have concerns about email with FOIA.
Right. I mean, I don't have any objection to having, you know, all the EDA and all the members of the Board of Supervisors. That was not my original intent, but I, you know, if that's, if that's what we want, and with citizens, my only concern is, I don't want to get, you know, 50 people or 100 people in the room. It just makes it very difficult.
My suggestion about a committee like this, then, is, let us bring it back after the public hearings this evening, and we talk to our legal counsel about how to set it up, and then that way, we can set it up correctly this evening. Does that work? The only other issue that I had with this discussion was, had been brought up about the B and D report that was done for the city, and I would ask that staff contact them and see if they can update it for us, and what the cost would be, and obviously, before anything is entered into, the board knows how much it's going to be, and we decide whether or not we want to do that. Any objection?
And bring that back on the 26th.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move on.
Next item, I believe, is board reports.
Mr. McLaughlin?
The only thing I was going to bring up, that it's National Police Week this week, and what I'd like to, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I think I'd like to thank all of our deputies and for everything they've done, and the sacrifice that they do every day, and, you know, and for the citizens out there, if you see one, shake his hand or her hand, and tell them, "Great job, thanks for the service."
Thank you. Mr. Ross? Nothing. Mr. Trampy?
No report.
Mr. Spula?
No report.
Ms. Heidig?
I'd just like to report that the Renaissance Fair opened this weekend, and they had a record-setting first day, and we had close to 4,000 people, maybe more, I don't have the final numbers, at the Renaissance Fair this weekend, and everybody had a good time, and the weather was gorgeous. I recommend that people bring their kids out, it's a wonderful family experience, and it'll be running the next four weekends, down at Lake Animal Winery.
And what are the hours for that?
10 to 5.
A weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Just Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 5.
And Memorial Day weekend is Military Appreciation, and I, I'm not sure of the price of admission. I would ask that you go on their website, V A R F dot org, to get it, or just type in Virginia Renaissance Fair. Every time I give a price, I find out they've changed it and I didn't know, because I don't buy tickets. But anyway, I just wanted to announce that, and everybody had a good time, and the weather cooperated, and it's, as I say, it's a really, it's a family event. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you, I passed out a paper that starts up with section 23 dash 5.8, point six, it's prohibited signs. We currently, our business people buy these expensive signs, and we've put quite a little bit of non-usage, if you want to say, what they can do with these expensive signs. It was brought to my attention that these electronic signs out there, you can't put a flag up there and make it wave, okay? Yet, two feet away, you can put a 28-foot pole up and put an American flag up there waving in the wind. And the other thing is, there's a thing called transitional animation. I was looking at one of my constituents that had a business, and it took about a quarter of a second, because it went in a clock form, that it stayed up there for more than four seconds, but by the time it got there, that was not legal, because that's called transitional animation. What you see in front of me, if you take a look at paragraph four, and I believe our staff is reviewing signage now, okay, and I would like them, if possible, to include this in it, so that in paragraph four, if you read it, it says, "This prohibition shall not apply to signs electronic or digital display that display date, time, temperature, weather, environmental conditions, or other onsite business information, with messages displayed in intervals of at least four seconds," and we're going to add this to it, "and allows for transitional animation to achieve the subsequent message, and the American flag shall be exempt from any restriction on its animation," which means that basically, you can, you can fly, you can make the flag look like it's waving on your sign.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, but I thought, this came up before, but I thought it was either state code that said we couldn't go to full animation or the four seconds...
It was something with the seconds, you're exactly right.
But it was four seconds, it was 10 reduced to four. It did not have to do with the animation.
Right, can we go back, well, the question is, I'd rather have full animation, if that's the case, and whether it's a motion or not, can we have the staff do the research and maybe go back to the state and request early for this or something?
Well, the staff will be able to tell us, because I did some research with our code, with Troy Tigler and his people, and they said, "This will be acceptable under state code." We just have to do it, because we did not add it. Now, in doing that, sir, I think we can double-check and go back and say, "Are we sure, if we add this to our ordinance, that we are legal with the state to do that?"
Or if not, let's request it in full animation, because I don't see a problem, I agree with you, why can't we display the American flag on a billboard? It's ridiculous.
Absolutely.
Without objection from the board, what we'll do is, we'll have Zoni come back and give a report on it, that at that point, if we want to request a public hearing to change the ordinance, we can, to at least allow the board the opportunity to know what we can and cannot change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll give you a little heads up, if you get a call from one of your constituents or businessman, I will tell you that right now, from what I understand, is that since this is under work, okay, they're not going out and looking for any violations, okay? So, nobody will be out there saying, "You're breaking the code here," especially since we, as a board, have brought it up to have it investigated and brought forward, okay? Just wanted to give that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have a report this evening? So, next on the agenda is a recess, and we'll recess until 6:15.
We do have, we do have closed session. We do have closed session.
Oh, we'll do a closed session first, okay. Let me take that back. Okay. It says recess next.
This will be your resolution to go on closed meetings, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically discussion concerning a recent matter before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors regarding the subdivision of property in the Cortlandt District and FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, Legal Advice with Respect to Freedom of Information Act. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The properties identified as TAPMAP 11144 is located in the Chancellor District, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2, 37, 11, A3, and 7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, and therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Next item on the agenda, Ms. Chairman, is public hearings. First one's the FY 2016, 2021 Secondary Six-Year Plan Joint Public Hearing with VDOT, and we've got, Mr. Morgan is here, our... And we've got, Mr. Morgan is here, our transportation planner, to lead us in that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Chairman, members of the board, the public hearing before you tonight is a six-year secondary plan. The six-year secondary transportation development plan is presented to the Board of Supervisors at a public hearing for approval on an annual basis. This plan includes the VDOT proposed secondary construction budget of $467,000 for FY 2016 and it outlines the projects prioritized by the Board of Supervisors in previous years for completion with the allocated funding. The plan also shows an average of approximately $452,000 being available and allocated for projects in each year of the next six years. These funds are for six-year secondary plan are derived from state and federal gasoline taxes, vehicle title fees, vehicle sales tax, and one-half percent of sales, state sales tax, and dispersed to the primary urban and secondary systems. These are all done after the addressing the maintenance administrative costs and other priorities established in the Code of Virginia. Virginia Department of Transportation is here to answer any questions. But as you see on that six-year secondary plan, I just wanted to mention a highlight that the board has made happen this year with regards to the road names or completion that are unpaved roads taken into this secondary road system. This is separate from the six-year secondary plan and funded and these roads are moving forward. They are Belfonte Road, Lane's Corner, Haley's Mill Road, Williams Lane, Spotswood Furnace, Wolfook Road, Twilight Lane, Sullivan Road, Maston Lane, Parker Lane, Mallard Point Lane, Wigglesworth Road, Ryland Payne Road, and White Shop Lane. Again, VDOT representatives are here if you have any additional questions regarding this six-year secondary.
Thank you. Any questions for VDOT? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Amy, has anybody signed up?
Sir.
Anybody here wish to speak on this issue? Seeing nobody rise, declare the public hearing closed. Any questions or a motion from the board? Motion by Mr. Skinner to approve any discussion. Seeing none, please vote now.
Seven yes.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the, under public hearings is this was an extension of R 14 dash 0009 International Development LLC where we left the public hearing open from the last meeting. And Mr. Hughes is here to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Mr. Chair, nothing has changed since the last meeting. The applications essentially remain the same. You heard earlier today, I think the board had some questions about the study, the plan study from VDOT for XO 126 and you heard earlier today when that would be available. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any and I'm sure the applicant would answer any if you have any.
Any questions? Mr. McLaughlin?
As I said, what was the, on the VDOT study? Did you say we have the results?
No, I said you just heard earlier that those results from the planning study would be here in mid-June.
Mid-June. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This gets back to a pretty basic question, but I keep hearing a different answer every time I, every time I hear about it. Does this proposal pay for the capital facilities impact? Or does it not?
It does. The proposal at full buildout would conform to the board's policy of paying for itself within 30 years. In fact, it would do it relatively quickly.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. Now, as far as proffers are concerned, how do they come in line with what was the original proffer guidelines and potentially the future proposed guidelines?
For the proposed guidelines that have not been adopted yet, they would be more than the proposed number. The project against the proposed guidelines would have a $20 million expectation. And right now, they are offering a $24 million expectation.
No. What about the existing, the actual current proffers?
Currently, they are $4 million short. So, there's an expectation of a $28 million contribution according to, against the policy and right now, they are offering 24.
A certain amount. Could you go over the proffers one? Do you know them offhand, what they are?
Which specifically? Do you want to go over the cash or?
Cash and in-kind and what are we giving credit for?
May I have the full computer, please? Thank you. So, in terms of cash proffers, they are offering a total of 6 million for the residential units, a million dollars towards the transportation fund, a million, $100,000 towards fire and rescue, and then there's also a million dollars towards the animal shelter to come out of the project. The applicant noted several in-kind items. They included the extension of water line, some improvements, transportation improvements along Route One, which we do not give them credit for because they're not, those transportation improvements along Route One would be required for the project. And then the water line extension, although we acknowledge their value, are not a part of the proffer policy. So, they don't get credit for those. So, that in a nutshell, their total, I guess that mitigation was about 24 million, 473, and proffer number is 28 million, 571. So, there's a deficit of $4 million.
Last one. We were talking to the applicant about an SSD or something to make up the delta to get us up to the full proffer, maybe a TIF for some of the roadwork?
We have had some conversations with them, yes.
Positive? I mean?
The applicant has been fairly receptive.
Because I think, you know, ultimately, we want to get the proffer based on the guidelines. And if we can make up some of that different with an SSD and maybe even a TIF as well to pay for some transportation shifts on the money to the schools or something, or future schools, that might be beneficial.
It would be. I think the applicant can certainly address their thoughts on participation in an SSD.
Okay. Do you want to do it now or?
Would the applicant like to address that issue?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne at the law firm Herschel Fleischer. And again, we appreciate your time and all of your due diligence and efforts during this process. Mr. Chairman, I will address that specifically and I'd hope I'd have an opportunity to also reiterate some of the comments we made at the last public hearing and as a reminder of some of the strong benefits of this project. But a couple of points. I mean, one, what we have offered in our proffer package, as Mr. Hughes has just presented, is obviously a mix of over $7.1 million in cash and in-kind contributions, which is not unusual for any project, including South Point Two, Elise Park, or any other project that's been approved. Certainly, this package exceeds any recently mixed-use project that's been approved by this board. And for purposes of meeting guidelines, certainly the current ones, I think we are probably on par, if not exceeding, some prior, prior applications that have been approved. With that note, I think it's really important to just remind the board, and I'm sure you're aware of this, that our total package is well over $27 million, although we're only getting credit for 24 million. Point being, is 2.1 of that is improvements along Route One, which we're not getting credit for in an interparcial connection because our guidelines don't allow that, and $549,000 in utility upgrades, which we don't necessarily need for our project, which will benefit other properties. So, I just want to note that. And plus, we have an appraiser, appraisal that came in $3 million higher than what we asked for credit on our dedication. I just want to make that point for any questions as to whether or not somehow we intentionally wanted to be under the current guidelines. In regards to the proposed guidelines, we far exceed those by, as Mr. Hughes said, 4 million. But if you, if you take into account the all-in investment for this project, we actually exceed them by 8 million. And I don't think there's been another project before this board that meets those financial goals. In regards to an SSD question or a TIF, we have said from the beginning that we are a partner in this process. We would encourage any sort of SSD, as you all know, would be a separate public hearing, completely separate process that would not just involve our property or our project, that it would be focused only on the commercial component of our site. That does generate about 44% of our traffic during the week and 54%. It's 300,000 square feet. So, that's a small footprint compared to what's north of us, which, as we all know today, we didn't create the problem that's occurring today, right? We don't have any traffic today. So, if there is an SSD, we would encourage that it be on other properties that would benefit from any infrastructure improvements. We have also proffered cash and in-kind proffers to have a connection, bridge connection from east to west that will mitigate traffic. That's not taken into account in the studies, in the planning analysis that's going on by VDOT for the proposed interchange improvements to 126. That would further mitigate any sort of impact. And my understanding is the preliminary analysis of that study is that this project and other projects, that the, that proposed improvements have adequate capacity for our project and other projects proposed and/or have already been approved. I'm stating all that maybe in a long answer and getting around the question, but yes, we would participate, but I think there should be a fair participation in a prorata basis, if you will, for what we would be generating from a commercial perspective versus what other already developed properties would be doing. As purposes of a TIF, that's a, that's something I think that will require further discussion. As you all know, that would be utilizing the taxes generated on the site to provide infrastructure onsite, which would be the bridge. The county is building the bridge, but we're providing cash for it. So, if you wanted to utilize those tax dollars for onsite construction, I don't think we'd have a problem with it and they can utilize the other, the other cash if you want for schools. But I will say for schools, as staff has confirmed, we're generating 583 kids over 10 to 15-year period. That's, if you just, if we did it in 10 years, that's 58 kids a year. I think the school system, from what I've seen in their CIP analysis and in their budgetary analysis to this board, they can, they have adequate capacity for 58 kids a year. With that, hopefully I answered the question and happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to come back to Mr. Hughes for a second. Just to clarify the difference between your answer to me and your answer to Mr. McLaughlin, the $4 million that they're short in proffers, that is made up for by a positive annual fiscal impact, correct? So, revenues to the county would be above the annual cost from this project and that's why it would pay for itself in a relatively short time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other que, Ms. Heidig?
I've gotten a number of concerns from some constituents on the traffic impact specifically. And I know that I would feel more comfortable if we had an opportunity to look at the, the new studies that are going to be available prior to, to voting on this particular issue tonight because I want to make sure. There have been concerns that because VDOT looks at, what, 2020 and 2040 and these numbers would be in those numbers, that it might adversely impact or increase costs or cause other, other issues with, you know, the J ramp and some of the other areas that we're looking at for improvement.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner?
Let me ask this, and this is really for VDOT, if you wouldn't mind, Sean. And that is, the, the bridge over 95 that these developments will bring, is that considered in your plans? Could you go through that one more time, whether it is or isn't?
Not included in our plans as that is a part of their TIA, I believe. They're analyzing that to show the benefits of the bridge. We are not analyzing that because we are not certain that it will happen. So, we did not include that in our plans at all.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think I'm good enough with that answer right now.
Notes from the board. Amy, has anybody signed up to speak this evening?
Yes. There are four citizens signed up to speak. The first is Arthur Mauer, followed by Raymond Burns.
Come forward, state your name, address. You have three minutes, sir.
Arthur Mauer. My address, 6320 Drainsville Road, Fredericksburg, Virginia. I apologize, I didn't come with the suit and expect that to be there. But I do have the basic question. Does the Spotsylvania Board work for tax-paying residents or for private interest? Facts that I'd like to present in here, just to give us a frame of reference. Spotsylvania County, as you know, is 128,000 people. We have 3,010 school employees and we have 1,713 teachers. 50% of our budget is school-related. What's not included in the recommended fiscal year 15 budget is any additional teaching positions, any additional investment in technology, no new courses or additional student learning, no additional funding or resources to support special need population in the classroom, and no restoring of positions previously cut. The school cost in fiscal year 2014, 2014 was 198 million and in 15, as you know, is bordering on 206 million. Critical to the out-of-year budgeting will be the advance of constructions related to approved but currently not built-out developments. Through mid-January 2015, a total of approximately 10,500 residential units are approved but not yet built. These units are expected to house 23,000 new residents, whom 3,900 are expected to be students in Spotsylvania. Big number for schools coming up. Residents that we talked about are expected to generate more than 2,700 new fire rescue calls. The Jackson Village proposal will add an additional 2,270 units drawing on Spotsylvania County Services. There are townhouses and condos proposed. There's 1,190 units proposed. The current book rate is 23,651. The developers are offering us $4,400. That comes to 554 or $5,400 million of forgiveness that's given to them. The apartments hold 695 units. On the books, the offering is $11,230. The developer is offering $1,205. Forgiveness by the pro offer lowering the price comes to 7 million. So, the total reduction in cash is 12,200. You'll be looking for that in the taxpayer's wallet, not in land. And I kind of ended up with a funny way of looking at how.
Sir, your time is up if you could finish, please. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Raymond Burns, followed by Beth Granger.
Raymond Burns, 6311 West Drainsville Battlefield District. Responsible growth is a good thing. Unchecked growth for growth's sake is unconscionable and needs to be reined in. The Planning Commission has stated that we need more rooftops to support more commercial. That strategy is leading us to gridlock. 3,000 new units were approved in 2013, 5,000 last year, and we're on track for approving 5,000 this year with Jackson Village and Alexander's Crossing. Few years back, the county was experiencing 1% growth due to poor economic conditions. That slowdown followed years of growth, the golden years, when the county was building a new school every year. a new school every year just to keep up with the pace. It was lamented that we needed to get back to the goal of two percent growth. Latest figures show that Spotsy's growing at a rate of three point two percent, and with thirteen thousand units awaiting build-out, that rate will certainly increase. Developer has serious shortfalls with regards to the proffers that are being proposed to mitigate the impact on facilities such as schools, transportation, and public safety. Ash proffers for the one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five apartments, condos, and townhomes are some twenty-seven to thirty-three million dollars short of county guidelines, depending on whether or not you include the much discussed debt service credit to the developer. In-kind proffers are out of touch with reality. The twenty-three acres they want credit for to the tune of thirteen million equates to five hundred and sixty-three thousand per acre. The company RS Means evaluates twenty-acre parcels at eighteen thousand three hundred dollars an acre, which means it should be worth about four hundred and twenty thousand, not thirteen million. Likewise, there's two and two point seven five million in-kind proffer for two of the four lanes of their main road through the community, which leads to the bridge to nowhere. Assuming Jackson Village and Alexander's Crossing are approved, it's been stated that the bridge over I ninety-five connecting the two is the taxpayer's problem. Spotsy Parkway averaged a car every three seconds, averaging fifty-three miles an hour three years ago in twenty twelve. We counted them for VDOT to get our traffic light. It has only gotten worse on every street, highway, and byway. Some six thousand seven hundred and fifty-five new households are forecast in the vicinity, with ninety-nine thousand additional trips per day. We will have achieved gridlock at that point. Staff has stated Jackson Village does not mitigate the impacts on capital facilities per adopted proffer policy. Also, there are significant impacts on the transportation network and public facility levels of service are of concern. This alone should be sufficient for the supervisors to disapprove the developer's request in the current form. The developer wants to turn a million-dollar land deal of twelve years ago into a billion-dollar development, in no small part with taxpayer contributions to help make it happen. Thank you.
Beth Granger, followed by John Falk.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity. My question is actually about trash. I want to know if they're required to build a landfill before they build such a massive complex with all of these different new homes and stuff. Are they going to put the construction debris in the landfill? That is my landfill. I've been a resident at six zero one New Pembroke Lane for fifteen years. Obviously, it's the first time I've ever been here, and I wasn't exactly sure how this is all going to work, but I didn't see anything addressed. And then you're going to put in a whole bunch of new homes and talk about these big numbers and several thousand places, and then suddenly I'm going to have to vote a couple of years later because all these people have all of this trash, and they're putting in my landfill, the one near me, and they're going to say, where are we going to put it? Well, they're not going to vote to put it near them where this place is. They're going to try to put it near me, or God forbid, the beautiful countryside of Spotsylvania. These are prime locations along this highway. This is a large development. We could go with a smaller group, several different smaller groups develop this property. We can go with someone who would benefit us more greatly with managing things like trash disposal areas. Are these homes going to be energy efficient, or are all the appliances going to be energy-starred? Have they thought about geothermal? I don't know all these questions. I don't know what they're going to offer for our county as far as moving forward. Maybe I haven't been to enough of these sessions, but it doesn't seem like they're really offering quite a bit of upfront to benefit, but yet they're taking this location in our county that we've zoned for residential, and they're maximizing it for themselves. And you say that you have, that there hasn't been anything of this magnitude prior in what you were saying, but you know, I'm not sure that we've had developments of that magnitude either, so we might actually require more of you. Something upfront like that. I don't want to have to vote about a landfill and have that put in my backyard for all these new homes in a different location. I think it would be a good idea if they put the landfill where they're going to be generating that trash.
John Falk?
John Falk, fifty-seven twenty-eight West Kessler's Crossing in Battlefield District. I'm not against development as such. I'm just against the amount of proffers which this developer is offering and the amount of commercial space which they've said they're going to provide. There's already vacant land in Lee's Park that was set aside for commercial development, and in ten years, not the first square foot of commercial development has been built. There's vacant space in Costner's Corner. There's vacant land space in Costner's Corner that's not been built on. If the property taxes are, that the developer is offering up based on commercial development, it's not going to pay, and we, the county citizens, are going to be held to pay for their development. Thank you.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Anybody else here who hasn't spoken wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Mike Brodersen, fifty-three twenty West Felipe Place Battlefield District. Proffers are negotiated by developers and paid by their buyers. Profits increase when proffers are reduced or waived. Staff and the development community have agreed on new substantially reduced proffer guidelines, and board actions create precedence. This board did not adhere to the previous proffer guidelines. If the new lower ones are ignored, what is the precedent you are setting? This board has already established a precedent that proffer agreements can be reduced, a million and a half to your colleague, Mr. Hicks, and an eighty-six percent reduction for River Crossing. The Walton Group agreed to pay, and this is rounded, twelve K per single family attached. Jackson Village has offered four, eight thousand lower costs, eight thousand more profits, eleven hundred and ninety units. What precedent? To meet guidelines, Jackson Village has overstated the true market value of their land donations by at least ten million dollars. What's the precedent of accepting a hypothetical value? The applicant states by right, traffic would exceed that of Jackson Village. The topography of the land makes that complete hyperbole. Please ask an expert. Jackson Village proposes to use Latitude Street as a collector. Collectors have lanes for left, right, and straight vehicle movements. Latitude is one lane. Who will pay to condemn and purchase the necessary right-of-way and to pay for the rebuilt street? Does this development really have a future positive cash flow, or the costs of building, excuse me, rebuilding Latitude included? Was the contribution from their proposed commercial component considered as a fully leased? That is another hypothetical situation, or reality as part of the two million five hundred and fifty thousand square feet available commercial zoning that is currently sixty-nine percent vacant or unbilled? I suspect the Walton Group alone is salivating at the prospect of reducing their Heritage Woods proffers, thrilled to know they'll get inflated value for any in-kind donation and won't have to pay anything close to their fair share of the costs of growth for Alexander's Crossing. It will cost millions of dollars in new public financing to fund infrastructure required by approving Jackson Village. Will you negotiate with Jackson Village to pay their fair share of the costs of growth? Or will you tell Spotsylvania taxpayers, we have to pay it for them? Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. May I ask that if you have any doubts as to the accuracy of my comments or to answer any of the questions we have raised, would you please ask the experts present to confirm or refute? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mary Lou Collier, Mr. Skinner's district. Since twenty thirteen, thirteen developments have been approved, residential developments. And now we want this mega Jackson Village to be approved. Alexander Crossing's two thousand six hundred and seven units. Jackson Village, two thousand two seventy, two hundred and seventy have approved. Lee Park, two thousand two hundred and fifty-two, one built out. Over seven thousand in total. We need to slice and dice this package. It's got a lot of loopholes. First off, your transportation study is incomplete. We're still waiting for a report from VDOT about a road that's maybe or maybe not be completed, which impacts the transportation. In an article, I quote, Charlie Payne said, quote, "The current traffic issues are not due to recent rezoning approvals or our application, but rather due to the growth that has occurred in this area for the past twenty years." Well, you know, if we got a growth problem, what do you do? You have to put a halt or a pause button. You've got enough development in the making. You talk about jobs, you need jobs. Well, what about these thirteen developments that have been approved? Where are the jobs being done on that? Is the land just being left vacant? Getting approvals and then it stops. I really think a one point two million dollar walking trails, possible amphitheater or pavilion, that's a lot of money to walk. And I said, who's going to maintain this? Once again, is this an HOA? Is this a county that has to maintain it? And is it open to all the citizens of Spotsylvania to use? Do each of y'all want to contribute one point two million to use a walking trail? We've got a lot of parks already. Your economic impact reports, Mr. Fuller, well, you know, that's their side of the story. We need more input as to how it impacts the county. Remember my rubber band from my last presentation, birth pains? You know, you can stretch the rubber band so far, ouch. There's a lot of birth pains if you keep development being approved. How is the county going to handle all this growth? You've got your worker bees, the county employees, working at max, and they can't hire more workers because the budget doesn't allow it. You don't have the money in the budget. You're going to have longer lines for social services. Your courts are going to be crowded with higher crime. Your EMS, your fire is going to be increased. I say the quality of our life needs to be checked into, and in my opinion, I think we have a three-ring circus in the making right now. Jackson Village, the ballpark, and Alexander's Crossing. Please don't flush Spotsylvania County down the toilet.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Barbara Shaw. I live at fifty-eight oh nine Jackson Road in Cortlandt District. The other week, someone stood up and said they did an impact study fifteen years ago on the housing. Nothing was mentioned of traffic or schools. Fifteen years ago? Look at today. We can't overlook our traffic and our schools. Latest newspaper article stated that there was possible detached homes. The proffer for detached homes is higher than for apartments, condos, and townhouses. This needs to be watched. How much will seven point two million pay to offset the county cost when it's going to cost three million dollars to run about a thousand feet at Harrison Crossing? Seven point two million dollars is not even going to pay the traffic, the roads, nothing. A donation of twenty-five acres or other in-kind proffers are nothing but bribes. Developers need to pay more proffers to defer the cost to Spotsylvania County. If better proffers were offered and approved by the board of supervisors, we would not need bonds. They're also planning a ballpark in the area. What is that going to do to our traffic? What is quality of life going to be? I wouldn't want to live in the area. I live over near Route Three, and it's already a nightmare. The board of supervisors must protect the constituents and the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Barbara Jackson, and I lived in Lee's Hill District. I live on Summit Crossing Road, and my concern is, actually, let me stop. I understand that all of my friends and neighbors haven't been getting letters. Me and my family have not gotten any letters. The only way I knew about this was from them and reading the paper. And my concern is about exactly where the development is going to be, the roads, the traffic, and the transportation. Second thing is the fire station. You have all these homes, you need to have a fire station near for the emergency if there is a fire. And right now, some of my family are having problems because they are paying absorbent fees for their house insurance because of not being close enough to a fire station. The next thing is going to be the traffic and also the emergency. Are we equipped to handle all of this? And I know where I live right now, on the road I live, there's a lot of traffic on the road, but the road is in very, very poor condition. And I just found out in the last three weeks, there is something that's going on right up the road from me, and I understand that is the gas line that's going back through some property near me that I guess is going to hook up to the subdivision. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Robert Fogg. I live at sixty-three thirty-one West Drainsville Drive in Battlefield District. I have just moved over here. I did live in the Chancellorsville area and used to have to go through the Route Three nightmare every day, and before they did widen that part of Route Three. But you know, that didn't solve the problem, really, because from Bragg Road back to Route ninety-five and from ninety-five north all the way to DC, it's still a nightmare because the problem is still there. And the problem is Route Three interchange and all the traffic is there from Central Park, so we never really solved the real problem. We just helped it from Bragg Road on out. And the problem is because development, development, development of commercial and subdivisions, and nothing was ever done until that widening took place that had helped that part of the problem. And when I moved over here, as soon as I moved over here last July, now it seems like this area over here is exploding. And I don't want to see the same thing happen here, that continuous development continue to take place without the planning of the transportation systems. And I think your supervisor, Ms. Heidig, had the right idea that you need to wait and see what VDOT's going to do, because you need those plans of the transportation systems there before you get all of the subdivisions in there. Because without that, we already have a problem en masse upon us. We all know that. We certainly don't want to make that any worse than it already is. Last week, I came here about the ballpark. I was late coming in because I set at the traffic light on Smith Station Road for seventeen minutes, waiting to get through the one light. Yeah, it was backed up way past the intersection to the Fox Point subdivision. And so, you know, we've got problems all over, but the problem is we've been fixing it with Band-Aids, left turn lanes. Extending a left turn lane a hundred and fifty feet isn't solving the problems we've got in Spotsylvania County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak? The applicant has rebuttal time? Once he's done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board of supervisors. My name is Charlie Payne, and we represent the applicant. First, we always respect comments from the public. Payne, and we represent the applicant. First, we always respect comments from the public, certainly those for and against. As you may recall, at our last public hearing, we had thirteen, fourteen business people, mostly small businesses, come and speak in behalf and support of the project. It's tough to get them out for two public hearings on the same matter, so we're sorry they couldn't be here, but I think you got the point from their comments at the last public hearing that they fully support this project because it will generate economic development in this area. We always hear a lot about growth. I understand it, recognize it, appreciate it. But the reality is Spotsylvania County isn't growing. It's not growing at three point two percent. It's growing at about zero point nine percent. It has had a low-growth rate for the past several years since the Great Recession. That has impacted, adversely impacted, your commercial areas, your commercial development areas, your commercial businesses. The county has a goal of increasing its commercial tax revenue to thirty seventy. Right now, it's at nineteen eighty-one. That's adversely impacting your tax base. The only way that this board can keep taxes low is to increase the commercial tax revenue base. I know that's what you want to do. In order to do that, you need to be able to facilitate growth in expenditures, not expenditures, but revenue at your commercial development areas. Cosner's Corner has lost five significant businesses since we applied. I understand soon to lose more. The hospital, looking to expand its facilities, is watching very carefully how we grow in Spotsylvania County. So is Germana. The investors that we have reached out to regarding the commercial site, watching us very closely as to whether this project gets approved, how we're going to move forward in the county. We also happen to be located in your high-growth area. This is planned for mixed-use growth. This is planned for high growth. It's a long-term plan. We're planning for the long term. We just happen to have two hundred and forty-one acres in that area. But we're not looking to grow in three years. We're looking to grow over the long term, ten, fifteen, probably more years than that, based on what the county's current growth rate is. We're improving a low-investment areas. No doubt that this area south of the interchange is somewhat blighted. This will improve the investment area with our investment of over eight hundred million dollars. This is a downzoning. I mean, you can say what you want. The facts, you're entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. The reality is that by right, we could generate eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six at full buildout, more trips per day, forty percent more trips, without having to pay one dollar in cash proffers, without having to improve Route One or build a bridge. Not one dollar. Economic development. Staff has confirmed, had folks doubt our numbers, well, staff reviewed our numbers unbiasedly, objectively. We're generating one point six million dollars of net revenue at full buildout. This project more than pays for itself. This project generates over fifty-one hundred new construction jobs. You heard the tradesmen come here at the last meeting saying, we need these jobs. We need this kind of construction in Spotsylvania County. Nine hundred and six permanent jobs will be available at full buildout, certainly with our health care facility. We are providing seven point one seven five in cash proffers. We're also providing a significant amount in in-kind proffers, over twenty million dollars. That is consistent with your policy, your current policy. We're exceeding your proposed policy by seven billion. Transportation. I heard someone talk about Spotsylvania Parkway, having all this traffic and need a warrant alike. Well, we're building a parkway. We're building a bridge. That wasn't our initial plan, to have that traffic come onto our site. That doesn't benefit us. But it benefits the county, and it helps mitigate the impact on one and moves the traffic east. That's a benefit to the county. Okay? That's why we have proposed a four-lane parkway. We don't need a four-lane parkway. We don't need a bridge. We'd initially planned for an interchange. I had taken off the table because it's not economically feasible for the state to build it. So the second Plan B was, is what you're planning for now at the interchange. And part of that is the bridge that we are proposing will help also mitigate those impacts. So we are playing a role, and we are being a partner in the process. Schools, we've talked about schools. There's cash proffers for schools. Schools, if the population isn't growing, the schools aren't growing. Again, long-term project. We think the schools have adequate capacity, and we have provided adequate proffers in that regard. This is a town center concept. This is a unique concept. This isn't your typical big-box concept. This is to not compete with our friends to the north. We want to feed them revenue to the north. We want to help Cosner's Corner. We don't want to compete with them. You're not going to see big boxes on-site. Again, we've also addressed phasing issues that was requested for us to look at. And in closing, I just want to reiterate, this is a downzoning in regards to traffic. It fiscally works in regards to proffers and what we're going to generate from revenue perspective. We're going to create jobs, which is vitally important. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First of all, let me close the public hearing. And then, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
Mr. Skinner.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important that we take it just one step further and try to get a little bit more impact study on the traffic. And I would like to table this for two weeks to bring it back on the twenty, today's the twelfth, the twenty-sixth meeting, please. So my recommendation is to table for two weeks.
Motion on the table to table for two weeks. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
When are we going to get the reports from VDOT?
The IMR report is Thursday, and then the planning, the supplemental planning report is mid-June, mid-June to late June.
I personally would prefer to have that study before we make any more decisions because that'll cover the whole area. That's my personal thing, that rather than just the one IMR, you know, wait for the whole sort of transportation study in that area to see where we are.
Is that a substitute motion?
Can I make it a friendly amendment to the motion?
I'd like to ask some questions first, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Sean, if you could come up just for a second, please? And the reason I'm a little hesitant is because the studies have been going on and on and on. We get a date every time the next meeting. We always get another date. It's been extended.
I'll just explain something. Our focus was on the IMR. We have been focused, and we have been given marching orders to get the IMR done. The planning study was supplemental. There was, we never had a deadline set for the planning study. The planning study, the county decided that we needed to take out the J-Ramp as a part of the entire concept. We first started off moving, looking at the entire concept as a whole. We went back to the drawing board at the request of the county and took that part out. We couldn't analyze that one part without the other entities in there. So we moved forward with the J-Ramp concept to get to this deadline of Thursday, and now we're trying to finish up and wrap up the planning study. There were two totally different projects.
Sean, please, that's not intended. I understand that. I understand that completely. I'm just bringing out a fact that, listen, we know the IMR is very important for, especially for the J-Ramp. We need this J-Ramp for the safety on ninety-five and to get this traffic off of Route One and back onto really South Point Parkway. So this was not a critical or, you know, but the fact of the nature is, even though it's your secondary, we're not positive, that we don't know a date when it's going to be completed and stuff of that nature. And, you know, I, it's, somebody could say that we are going to have this on the June fourteenth meeting or something of that, or whatever our June meeting is. I'm sorry, whatever date that is. Because really, you're not sure yet. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, you're exactly correct. I pushed the consultant on our Monday conference call to have me something by mid-June, and their response was they were looking at toward the end of June. So I'm pushing for mid-June. That's what I'm pushing for.
And I appreciate that, and I think every board member up here does and appreciate what we've asked you to do. I just think it's, what, I think some of the information in the IMR this Thursday may help some of the situation, too.
Yeah.
I think that's probably more, not more important, I shouldn't say it, but just as important as the safety study, too.
Yes, and I think that what I'll say is that the IMR, and on Thursday, they will brief a little bit on the planning study, what they've seen thus far. The J-Ramp IMR specifically looks at I-95 and getting the J-Ramp approved. The planning study looks at the entire area as a whole, to include the super ramp, possible Germana extension, widening of Route One, improvements needed at 208. It's looking at the entire area as a whole.
And some of that will be discussed at the IMR on Thursday, you said?
Yes.
So just without having something perfectly in place saying we're going to have it by this date, I think it's unfair to the applicant. We've had this on the board for many, many months, and so...
So you won't accept a friendly amendment?
No, I won't.
Then I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this. And I'll say until the second meeting in June, in the hopes that the study is done. But I guess then at that point, we'll have to go without it if, for some reason, it hasn't been done.
So there's a substitute motion to table until June twenty-third. Any further discussion? Are we, there we go. Please vote.
Six yes with Mr. Skinner voting no.
I just feel that there are some issues that we need to address to the best of our ability that have come up.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business.
New business, Mr. Chairman. Staff, does that have any new business?
One item I would like to let the audience know is that the IMR presentation will be done at the Transportation Subcommittee, which is this Thursday. It starts at six o'clock in the Planning Building in the Market Square area on the third floor. So if you're interested, please come, and you can hear all about it also. Any new business from the board? Is there a motion?
To adjourn.
Oh, I apologize. That's under new business, Ms. Heidig. Well, then, old business to figure out the structure of the committee for moving the baseball issue forward. There are several ideas on the table. One is to have two members from the board kind of move this forward and be the people making it move forward with input from everybody. Another idea is to filter all of these, all this information and concern directly to county admin, and from there, they will spread it out to board members. Is there a preference from the board? Is there another alternative? Mr. Sebula.
I, this is a very important decision and a very important subject that we're going to be discussing. And I personally feel that any board member who wishes to be a member of this committee should be allowed or should be afforded that privilege. Same goes for the EDA membership. I feel that if we limit the committee, even though it can become unwieldy as an extra-large committee, if we limit the membership of the committee, I don't think we have done our full due diligence.
Thank you. Any other concerns, proposals, thoughts? Well, I'll put forward mine. How about we set up a committee with two board members, two EDA, and not to limit anybody else from any input, but just have them move it forward. Now, make that a motion. How's that? Seeing everybody jumping at the opportunity. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just clarity. What you're going to do is the group will interact. All the stuff will come through county admin, and I'll distribute to the entire board.
Yes.
And then if other board members want to chime in, they can chime in, too, at that point.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will there be any citizens involved?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any citizens?
How do we choose those, Mr. Chair? Each supervisor or someone gets a chance to nominate someone for that appointment?
Sure.
Well, this is a discussion. Now, you've made the motion, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we're putting all our information into the county administrator, and then he's going to pass it out to all of us, why should we have a committee at all? Why don't we just respond to that?
Well, that was version two.
Okay.
So...
Well, I'm just trying to figure out...
Mr. Chair, though, I...
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. It's okay. You know, I'm not saying this to be smart or anything, but, you know, I heard last meeting that we didn't get enough people involved in this, okay? And I'm sorry, but I'm going to listen to what y'all told me, and I'm trying to make that possible this time, whether you're for it or whether you're against it, okay? And so find it hard to offer this up, and then people don't want to do it. So that's what I'm saying. If you want to be part of it, you should be part of it. That's what I heard last time, so...
Then I will withdraw my motion, if you would like to make one.
I will make a motion. And anybody on the EDA or anybody on the supervising board desires to be on this committee, let us know. And then we will get together.
May I add a friendly amendment to that?
Yes.
To encourage our citizens to also email in so that we can get the information into county admin?
Coming, what you're proposing would constitute a public meeting, and you would have to have notice when you met.
Yeah, but what we're saying is we're...
Yes, when you met.
So, but here's what I want to do. We have to get the EDA involved in this, too.
Absolutely.
We have to have the EDA involved. So what I'm recommending is that these meetings that we hold, and that's why it's so easy, is that we try to either hold it the day of our regular meetings, either an hour, and I agree that it's hard getting here at six o'clock sometimes. You know, I'm willing to stay after the meeting and for an hour and talk to people in this case. I just heard what the public said. I heard what other people said, and I think that's the best way to handle it because we're not going to get beat down twice, hopefully.
Then what we'll do is filter everything through county admin. How's that? Everybody get your questions, concerns, suggestions into county admin, and we will...
Absolutely.
...burst it from there.
And I recommend that, too, that we pass it on to the EDA, that they are part of this, and they should go through, EDA should also pass on to the county administrator their concerns. And I think what we can do is work together with our own EDA members. Very, maybe we can save a lot by working with our members so that we can come to some simple, no reason for us to put in two of the same thing. So I'd recommend we work with the EDA members, and we all get it together. That way, they're not left out either.
Sounds good. Yes, Mr. Sebula.
Doug, would it be possible to set up a website for this?
Yeah, it's possible. We could, in other words, to get input. Are you talking about input from the public?
Input from the board, input from the EDA, input from the public goes into one, so you guys aren't looking everywhere for this information.
Well, no, if it all comes to us, we'll work out the logistics. I don't think a website, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
We'll work it out. We can work one depository. I just want to make sure that everyone participates, all the information's collected, you guys aren't having a special meeting.
Right.
And everybody's privy to the information.
Same goal.
So are we clear? Is the motion? Mr. Skinner made a motion.
I made a motion that...
No, I had one. I withdrew mine.
He had one. He withdrew it. I made the motion that basically what we're doing is we're getting input from all the supervisors and all the EDA members, and citizens will be able to put their input in through...
County admin.
We'll set up something other than my email address.
Yeah, and then...
I still, I guess the confusion that I have is, so we have all this information. So how do you make a decision from there?
We make, we review it at the meetings that we have set up. If we do have to have a special meeting, then we do the proper public announcement to have it.
Just to, so there's no committee, then?
Not going to be a committee.
Yeah, I agree. This is just, everybody can submit, whether it's citizen, EDA.
Everybody has the inputs. Well, here's what we have.
My concern was, I had thought initially the purpose of the committee was to negotiate with the owners of baseball, assuming there are any negotiations that will take place, assuming any of this is going to go forward anyway. And so, to me, we have two different issu- And so, to me, we have two different issues that we're trying to do. One is to make sure that everyone is involved in the discussions and we know, you know, what our citizens are thinking and they know kind of what we're thinking and what we're looking at and we get input on, you know, what we think we need to see as part of any deal, if there is ever a deal, which there may never be a deal. But the other is that I thought that it was more to also continue the specific, like lease negotiation or negotiation with the ball field, ball people, which I would assume would have to be, by definition, a smaller group. That's all.
And I would recommend that what we do is, once we get all our issues together and put them, then you can go ahead and assign yourself, members of the board, to negotiate with that. That's how I would handle that.
And really, it would behoove us, I think, to get everything together so that should anything move forward, then we're prepared at that point to do that. And perhaps even have the outside counsel look at what we're saying and say, you know, there's no point in even going forward because this won't, yeah, this won't go anywhere. So, yeah, I'm okay with that. I was just getting confused between what exactly we were trying to do.
Any further discussion? Seeing none.
Do we even need a motion?
Well, Mr. Skinner made a motion, so. We'll owe the board to send everything to Mr. Barnes' new email address he's going to be giving us.
We will send you, we will send you an email address. We'll get it out. We'll figure it out tomorrow.
There are three members voting.
Seven yes.
All right, thank you. Any new business or old business? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
No.